All right, it's 6:00 PM Tuesday, August 13th. We'll call to order the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission. Mr. Hollis will give the invocation and Mr. Urban will give the pledge. Stand.
Well, thank you for this day. Thank you for this time we get to come together and debate, talk about, decide what's best for our community, God. We pray that the decisions we make tonight, one, grow this community, benefit this community, and two, glorify you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The federal agents to the flag of the United States of America. In your republic, for which fans, one nation under God, indivisible, in their redeemed and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda? Get a motion?
I make a motion we approve this agenda?
Second?
I'll get that motion.
All in favor? Ah, motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the prior meeting, July 9th, 2024?
I mostly approve the meetings from the prior meeting on July 9th.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ah, all right. Number five, Mr. Brooks, we'll turn it over to you now.
County Farm and Home Co-op Feed. Jess Diller with Bridgepoint LLC, representing United Feed and Home Co-op, on 21.5 acres, tax map 126, parcel 041.11, and located at 1385 Main Street, has committed for an 18,000 square foot accessory building with site improvements.
All right.
Open it up for discussion. We do have that. Mr. Diller?
Hello, I'm Jess Diller with Bridgepoint with engineering on this. Just here to answer any questions you might have for tonight.
I think maybe we need to go through Will's list first if we can. I mean, I've got one question. I guess off the top, if they've complied with the stream crossings, the paperwork is supposed to be done. So I thought it was sent in, but it not, it was just in the works?
Yeah, we're working with TDEC to get that permit.
Okay. I think the recommendation was not to do anything until we had that. Was that the recommendation I read? Okay, so, all right, we'll go ahead with Will's list.
Sure, Chris mentioned this is an expansion of the existing site. They're adding 18,000 square foot building and a couple of silos, and reconfiguring some drives in and out of the site to accommodate those proposed uses. All in all, we've listed a number of items that you could consider as conditions of approval. Some relate to locations of utilities, sites of utilities. The site is currently served by septic tank, which is fine. We just want to make sure that the water lines are located in areas that's will be covered by buildings and that the capacity is there also. There's also, you know, latest version of the site plan did not show where the water line is coming through. So we just want to make sure there's no conflict between the existing water line.
John, I can't hear you.
Just want to make sure there's not a conflict between the existing water line location of the proposed buildings. We've also listed a couple of items for you to consider as waivers. This falls under your design review responsibilities. They have to do with the surface of parking lot, surface of driveways. The applicant has stated that their use required or would benefit from gravel, being in driveways and the parking lot. And that's something you can consider. Your decision can't be based on cost alone. It needs to be kind of with the proposed use or function of the site, something along those lines. But it is something you can't consider. There's also, you know, typically we require a handicap accessible parking spot. So we would recommend that a non-paved accessible parking spot be located somewhere on the site. It's obviously up to the property owners to enforce that. But that would cover the city under its ADA obligations and responsibilities. Do you have any other questions about the bullets we've included here?
So we'd have to do that even if they're not like really a retail outlet?
It covers your responsibility, the city's responsibility. Again, it would be up to the property owner to enforce those requirements.
That keeps us from somebody suing us because we don't have it.
Right. If something were to happen, they could step into the grease here, but they could talk.
Yeah.
But the overall recommendations, wait until we get this other study done? Where the crossing, the water study? I mean,
I think it can be a condition. It can be a condition.
Could it change their plans?
It may, but it probably wouldn't change it in a major way if that would make them relocate the building or something like that. Maybe ask them to upsize the structures, the crossings, maybe reconfigure the drives. But those permits can run concurrently. And if something were to cause a major change in the site plan sign, we might bring that either back to you for modification of the site plan or just an update if it's something that Chris can improve.
And just for reference, we've already been in contact with Chad Augustine with TDEC. We have been so is Co-op. And basically Chad, based on the conversations that Brian Laan with Co-op and had had with Chad Augustine, it's really a matter of formality to get the permit. He said it's not technically required from his end. So Brian Laan with Co-op said, hey, let's just go ahead and get it. Because I know the city wanted it as well, so that's why we're in the process. So from a TDEC standpoint, I don't see them coming back with anything major to suggest that we would have to revise the layout. Like Will said, maybe just some pipe sizes changing, but nothing major.
Now, the way the two crossings look, would that change? Right now, it's just like a, like somebody just threw something in there and?
Potentially. I mean, it might be that we come back with maybe two 36-inch pipes to match what's there existing for the one main drive that's there. So that it looks a little more natural instead of just one large pipe.
Yeah, because it looks like somebody just threw it in like some temporary.
Yeah, because that ditch is not very large. I mean, you're probably five foot wide, five foot deep. So fitting something closer to what's there would be ideal.
I'd say we do have the letter from the airport saying that whatever's going to be built is going to be within their authority. Any other question? I guess do we need to talk about the gravel a little bit?
Being in transportation, we need gravel. Because anything, I mean, like even a motor coach that's just sitting empty on a paved with the heat, it's within a year you've got divots coming up. And the mountains arise out of nowhere.
And with the sewer, are we all good with being on the septic, the new building?
Our understanding is that the site currently serves as a septic tank. We just want to make sure
it's capable of handling.
That it can handle it and that the proposed building location wouldn't compromise.
We can get a letter from the bio mail.
Yeah, and we had put a note in the plans or in the comment response to say that that'll be field located prior to construction. So that we do know before we get to building a building or anything else that hey, we're not going to affect this. And we know that the septic tank is of adequate size for, I think, the two bathrooms or one bathroom that's going in in the little 24 by 30 office building.
Is this going to add employees? If you want to still be staffed about the same as far as you know?
I'll add about three to four employees.
Okay, so I mean, how many are there now?
Twelve.
Twenty-five percent more on the septic system, it's not a third more. And any other questions, more discussions? Any questions on the landscape plan that they were wanting to use?
So this site is pretty unique. It's well off the road.
Yeah.
Row crops and road in the creek. So that might be something you want to consider in terms of their request to waive the landscaping requirements. And, you know, the operation is very dependent on trucks moving through any particular way close to the buildings. So they want to avoid additional planning near the foundation. That's something to consider. But you may want to articulate that a certain way. Note you needed the stream buffer as meeting the adequate landscape requirement or the field in front of the stream.
And the building is green somewhat with a fence along the ditch line. So from the street view, you're up a little higher, but you are looking at a fence. They have row crops there. Seasonal, but there's also a fence six feet.
Yeah.
And the entrance coming into the site will be concrete heavy duty. So the plan is in a fork out so that then it'll turn transfer into gravel at that point.
I think that'd be a good idea for sure.
Consider a lot of concrete.
I think we've done 75 foot down the new drives and then 100 foot down the existing drive. It would all be heavy duty concrete. And like Will said, there is a buffer that we've left along the ditch there. So from the road, you'll have probably 70 to 75 foot of buffer that's not going to be disturbed to try to meet the landscaping requirement, to try to help leave it as natural as possible and use that natural landscape as our landscaping.
All right. Any more questions? Chris, David?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Yes, we're good. Entertain a motion?
Our request is that we address the waiver issues. One, where it might be complicated to do all that in a motion because there were bullish, but we don't want to kind of vote on those. That might be a different way.
So we got a landscape waiver. Gravel drive waiver for parking. We also need to maybe a handicap spot. Either give them a waiver for it or tell them it has to be done.
Is it addressed already or not?
Yeah, I don't think you can waive the handicap requirement. Like if you were to get a waiver for the gravel, it would stay with exclusion.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we have, I think we need that.
And then do we address that TDEC?
Just let TDEC handle that.
Okay, so we, I mean, but I meant do we make it contingent on that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I'm not trying to take over TDEC.
Yeah.
And that's pretty common. I mean, sometimes these things just
Yeah.
Who thinks they can get that into motion?
And then all the conditions will have to be met before we issue a land service for it. Not even a building at that point. So those are things when it comes to the floodplain, we have to be very cautious.
What? No, it doesn't. So Will, do I have everything here then? Waive that, allow that.
With the exception of having a head.
And it's that.
Yeah. I think that's everything. If it's not, no, somebody will let us know.
Okay, well, I'd say we accept this contingent upon, well, contingent upon the TDEC situation getting all handled. And we can waive the landscape requirement and we can allow gravel drive and parking with the exception of a handicap spot.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Number six, Mr. Brooks. Director Brooks.
Exentria Building. Owned by Exentria Assets Management LLC. Property identified as tax map 126, parcel 41.01, being legally recorded and on file with the Register of Deeds Office. The property is located in Cherry Glen Industrial Park on the corner of Sam Watkins Boulevard, William Shirley Road. The applicant requests the approval of a 167,480 square foot industrial building.
I think we want to do this in reverse order. Let's go over the issues first and then let the applicant talk. Instead of vice versa.
If it helps, I do have an updated landscape plan for the screening.
Okay. Is it the stamp plan that's supposed to be in part of the?
It's a newly stamped one.
A newly stamped, okay, that's fine. Will, if you'd like to go ahead first, then we'll get to the other parts.
So this is a, this is new site development. Still here to build off of, so we're not trying to conform our existing site that was developed under other rules. And this is in Cherry Glen, so it's already gone through their IDP improvement process.
Yeah.
And I would note that this is, this is a very complete plan, but they are asking for some waivers for us to consider due to the orientation of buildings, the internal operational requirements of the facility, and the fact that they're off the corner lot. So just kind of keep those in mind as we kind of go through some of these requests. First has to do with corner side yards and how they relate to overhead doors and loading days and things like that. Within the zoning limits, the requirement for loading is to be away from public views in the corner lot, well, road frontages or fronts of buildings. In this case, they've got some overhead doors on the corner side of the facility. And they had that for very specific reasons. They're planning to expand to the east. So they want to keep those available for expansion. And something to do with the specifics of the internal processes and manufacturing benefit those exit doors being located in that location. So those are the reasons that they're there. They're not ignoring the requirements in any way. This is something we talked about early on in the process. But they are asking for that waiver. In addition to that, there's some landscaping requirements that require loading areas to be screened and provide guidelines for approving that screening. The site is very well landscaped for the plan that we're receiving. It's a combination of tree shrubs, I think, most of the change. I think the corner side, kind of the west side of the facility is mostly screened with trees, canopy trees. And I think that would probably be effective, but it's your call to make that decision if that's adequate or not. I believe the caliper size has been adjusted to the trees. That's no longer an issue. And then I just stand behind my architec, that's helpful. The irrigation plan, they've committed to finalizing the irrigation plan once we're getting closer to building permits and land service permits. Right now, it's a conceptual plan that will be refined as they come through those final details. There's no signs included in the site, in the site plan. That's fine. They can permit those separately and they understand that part of the process. The last, oh, sorry, there's a note on here in regard to detention ponds. There's actually three detention ponds on the site plan. There's a really large one to the northeast corner of the site that's out of view from the public. There are two smaller ones that help collect water descend back to a pond.
Quick clarification, we updated since there's one on in the northeast. That one on the west side is just a swell to a yard and it's not a pond. It's a dry, just grass swell.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it looked like a small pond. But if that's safe, it just needs to be unskated. Again, you can have flexibility in how you want that screened for the zoning warrants considered service areas. This is all going to be completely sotted and landscaped, so it's up to you to decide if that's adequate or not. The one on the front of the building is behind the landscaping, behind the parking lot, which is also probably adequately covered. And then the dumpster was in addition to the site plan, located on the back of the building, which is fine. And the screen, it's enclosed in a screening wall. We just wanted to make sure that the dumpster would be, the top of the dumpster would be two feet below the top of that screen wall to make sure, you know, the roof's not creeping up and things like that. Probably not an issue. Just wanted to verify that that was the case and noted on the plans. So that can be an easy condition of approval. And then the last note has to do with the lighting plan. Overall, no issues with the lighting levels across the site. It's a big site. They've great job spreading the light around to provide safety. And they requested a pole height of 30 feet, which is allowed, but it adds to you for that. The max otherwise without your approval is 22 feet. And the reason that you get a little more purview over a higher pole height is just to make sure that no glare is going to impact, you know, a neighbor or, you know, a street. In this case, we're within the industrial park. Neighbors, other neighbors have pretty small holes as well. So just that's for your consideration as well. And then if there's any additional questions, having to answer those, then I'm sure he's very excited to.
Get started.
Man, that was a really good summary. Clay Smith, civil engineer with Kimble Horn. My Chris introduced the project. It's roughly 168,000 square foot, class A manufacturing facility, filled up concrete. Very nice, what would you say, like top notch, you know, new construction. The facility is very unique in some ways, but also not in that it's typical to like a cross dock facility. Meaning that one side has shipping, one side, one side has receiving. Therefore, in a corner lot, it's impossible to have loading not be on a street front, if that makes sense. And with the building itself, it's really cool in that you have shipping on the southwest side, manufacturing on the northwest side, office southeast, and then receiving northeast. So it functions the way Exentria operates and also has room for expansion to the east future phases as well. So it's been very studied in a lot of different ways, if that makes sense. As far as screening, the latest landscape plan includes the 11.4 evergreen shrubs on the whole western front edge in addition to the street trees along the curb line. So that helps there. What else? Two and a half inch minimum caliper, for sure. And then the 30-foot mounting height. Typical industrial standards is 30 feet. And we did the buttometres to confirm the counts still. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Question? Didn't have any either. I mean, it's located in an industrial area. You don't have any really neighbors to worry about that aren't industrials, so.
Can we come for the covenants on this?
Yes. Okay. The industrial review committee, they did review this. Was a handout that I gave you prior to the meeting. I met with Travis Grove for about two hours. We went over the plan pretty thoroughly. And they have a matrix that they adhere to. It's about 21 or 22 bullet points. And there was a couple of items that we questioned, sent the comments. They addressed them and at that point, that was emailed out to the review board. And of course, it came back unanimous.
Yeah, we've got the copy of the date at 8:06, 2024. Yeah. No questions. I'll entertain a motion if we think you can get it all in there again.
If it helps to clarify, there's really no outstanding issues here. We just have potential waivers that you consider.
Of the, where the doors are located?
The dumpster height, the doors, and the 30-foot lights, sort of three things like that. It may be a variance for the landscaping around the detention pond because it's in the back. Is that, yeah.
Well, I really don't think that requirement would pertain to that.
I understand.
Okay, I'll give it a shot. I'll make a motion that we accept this plan with waiving the location of where the overhead doors are as it's on a corner. And that we allow the, we'll waive the 22-feet height restriction and allow them to go to 30 feet for the lights and the height of the dumpster.
Should be two feet below the.
Below the.
Yes. Did I get it? You make me work so hard.
Do we have a thing? All in favor? Motion carries. Number seven, do we have any old business?
No.
Some old people.
Number eight, do we have any other business?
No other business.
Board staff comments? I got a couple of comments. I forgot to recognize Philip last month as being our new city manager and wanted to welcome to the fire. Need to welcome Cory back this month.
Yes.
And glad to have you back, Cory. And those are the only two comments I've got today, so.
There are some staff comments that we need to address. You'd receive the link for the new agenda and the way we will be able to have these plans for you to view and the citizenry also to view. So we'll transition into that probably the next planning commission meeting to use that. It will be on each screen. So at that point, the plans could be displayed along with the agenda so citizens could follow. But it's, I like it.
So we don't have to like.
So may I add to that?
Absolutely.
So thank you for the comments. I'm using fire, but not this. But you did see the night, the, it's very basic. I'm trying to use that as new agenda software. Everything was on the screen. One great thing about this, and I know you guys at the planning commission probably need the plans on paper, but it's uploaded, it's on our website. Everything you saw tonight, other than the supplement plan that comes through, is on there and that's what I was looking at the whole time. So I think it's going to be a really neat thing and we're going to slowly introduce this to all our boards.
This will be updated like in real time? I mean, like, has new plans come in? Is it, is it going to be a complete packet when it gets out there? Is it going to be like the first level of questions and the second level? Or is it, what's it going to look like?
Sort of like the night, other than you get supplement stuff, but all the comments, Will's comments, they are all on the website. So none of you guys can see it, but anybody in the public is going to as well.
I think that's good.
And ultimately, aren't we trying to do digital voting?
Yes, and that's probably going to be a work in progress, but yes, we want to do the digital voting.
It'll just, you'll be pressing something if I have a press.
And then the end result, what I really like about it, you can go to any historical meeting and you can go to that date and you can click on the video and even links to the section of what you're looking for. Instead of kind of scrolling and all that. So it's a pretty neat, the end result.
It'll be good. Looking forward to it. I do still like when we have site plans to have, because I can't read it on my little computer. Why did I hook up to the TV? Are y'all behind us TVs? I'd not hooked up to the TV. Are y'all buying us TVs? Do we have any other board comments, Cedric? Nobody signed up to speak, anybody else want to speak? And we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.